Okay, and as you are here, this meeting is being recorded. So it will be posted on the website later. So keep that in mind. So again, the first item in the meeting, and again, delighted just to see everybody. And thank you for joining us. The first item in the agenda is the approval of the meeting. So I need a motion.
So moved.
We'll move.
Okay. Any modifications, any changes?
None on my end.
Here, okay, good. Give me none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you so much. So the meetings are approved. And then the first item in the agenda is New Britain High School, Lisa. So are they on the phone already, are they on the webcam?
Yes, I think I heard everyone join us. For the first item, we are going to discuss New Britain High School, which is for approval for an additional Commissioners Network year. With us here today, we have Superintendent Sarah, Principal of New Britain High School Damon Pierce, Mike Kent, their turnaround office consultant, and Deputy Commissioner Desi Nessmith is also with us today. So New Britain High School is currently in year three of the Commissioners Network. Principal Pierce began serving as principal on July 1st, 2018, now completing his second year as principal of New Britain High School. New Britain High School has made some improvements when looking at their four in six-year graduation rates. However, there's much more work to do, especially as it pertains to attendance and instruction. As a reminder, on January 16th, State Board of Ed members Estella and Erin, together with myself and Mike Kent, visited New Britain High School to engage in a conversation with Superintendent Sarah, Principal Pierce, and Ms., excuse me, and Assistant Superintendent on New Britain High School progress while in Commissioners Network, and also the sense of urgency to improve outcomes for New Britain High School students. At this point, I'd like to open it up to Superintendent Sarah, and then to Principal Pierce for further discussion.
Thank you, I want to make sure that you can hear me. Yeah, very good. And I am now also joining via the webcam. I was having difficulty there, so I might be in two places, I'm not sure. So first off, thank you very much for being a part of this and for inviting us to the table today. I want to first off thank Ms. Lemenzo, Mr. Kent, and Jen Webb also, as being a really strong team of partners pushing us where we need pushing, and having honest conversations with us for about two years. And while I'm here today to ask for this fourth year, I'd be remiss by not saying that we have not made the gains that we had intended to make at the onset three years ago. We are, and again, just some of the context around it has been a new leadership on my part with a new principal, the turnover of that principal, and really learning over these last two years the importance of systems and structures in place to support the building leaders to do the work of improving outcomes for all students. We have worked very hard over these last two years to do just that, with just weekly meetings with support for Mr. Pierce, as well as by Michael Kent, to ensure that the strategies that were implemented, or the strategies that were written are implemented and enacted with fidelity, always keeping our eye on the student outcomes. I am really proud, I have to say, of Mr. Pierce coming in now in his second year, and recognizing, as the state has indicated, that our student outcomes around chronic absenteeism are not where we need them to be, nor are instructions. We do feel like we are on much more solid footing now in terms of an infrastructure to support our building leader, Damon, as well as later on in the conversation, some of our other principals who are schools that might be joining the network soon. We're hopeful for that. Um, and I think I'm going to leave it at that. Ms. Lemenzo, if there's anything else you'd like me to add at this point?
I think at this point, we can open it up to Principal Pierce.
Thank you, okay.
Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. My role today is to provide you with an update on the progress at New Britain High School. I'm going to use the framework of the one-pager that I believe is my understanding you have in front of you as kind of a guide for my elders. There's a lot to talk about, so I'm going to speak real, real fast and try to leave time for some questions at the end. I'm going to start with some of the brighter points and the successes here at the high school. The graduation rate certainly stands out as among those, from 70 to 85%, consistent climb year over year. As the superintendent alluded, I can't really claim that that's due to improvements overall in instruction, but I think there's a powerful lesson there for the high school is that what can happen when you actually identify an issue and you put the systems and structures to identify and support students in achieving goals? There's a powerful lesson there, and I'm sure we can replicate that elsewhere. Manufacturing Academy at New Britain High School is also a shining success. We welcomed it to manatee this year. You know, we're trying to build a career pathway for students to go into the manufacturing and we're actually operating in industrial arts meaning more like a Smithsonian exhibit. So through funding, generous funding from the Commissioners Network, we're able to be paying for facility, and this is absolutely critical for sustainability. Those Commissioner Network funds committed the district and the school commitment to the program and have served as seed money in attracting outside partners. So we have local industry who are donating hundreds upon hundreds of thousands of dollars to keep the growth going there. So that's a great success. And then also our suspension rate here at the high school has shown improvement. At 23%, I think it's far too premature to declare victory in that area. What's critical here is that that growth really is the outcome and the product of a culture and climate team, which exemplifies the type of collaboration that I really want to make sure is embedded everywhere throughout this building. And the team is comprised primarily of teachers, but also includes an administrator. It includes deans and campus safety officers. And the key here is that you can approach a common problem from multiple different perspectives so that your product is a far better, far better outcome. And it also exemplifies, my mantra is that it's not my job to be the smallest guy at the table, it's my job to get the right people to the table. Those are the successes. Let's talk about the areas of growth. And before I get to that, I want to take a real brief detour into some EdSite data that I was digging around in. Now, I'm not a super fan of SAT data. It doesn't provide you robust cohort level data that you can use to really inform program instruction. But when you look at it long-term, we've got four years right now. And so it shows our progress as a school, and importantly, it shows our progress vis-à-vis like schools. So it's a measure on our progress that we can reflect upon. And I looked at two school districts in particular. I looked at Danbury and East Hartford. And I picked those schools. They have a similar demographic profile in terms of student. However, they are, they're not multi-high school districts. They have one large comprehensive high school like us. So I think that's a real fair comparison point. And I looked at four years' worth of data, and I started with our students with disabilities, and our free and reduced lunch in our ELL population, our high-needs students. And then I compared our progress there with our non-high-needs students. So you've got four data points there for math and ELA, spread out over four years, that's 16 data points. And in every single case, New Britain High School came in last. That's a damning indictment of where we are right now, I recognize that. And I presented to you today so that you fully appreciate and understand that I'm not trying to pull the wool over your eyes. I'm not certainly trying to pull the wool over my eyes. We've got a long road in front of us, but I'm convinced that we have the structures and the framework here to really start making some significant progress. So our focus this year is really, number one, has to be on tier-one instruction. Now, State Board Education members, you might be right to ask. Well, hey, listen, we've spent lots and lots of state money on building staff capacity around instructional strategies here at the high school. It was embedded in the plan in the beginning, and it has been a significant expenditure every single year. And you are absolutely correct, we have done that. But as I finished my first year last year, and as we started off this year, I've identified that the real root of the instructional malaise at New Britain High School goes a little bit deeper than that. And as the mid-year audit indicated, and I think Mike Kent can support this as well, is that there really is a lack of quality instruction, a vision around quality instruction in the high school. And by that, I mean, like, if I'm a classroom teacher, I'm going to start each lesson designed first and foremost with those intended targets. Where do I need the kids to get into that instructional sequence? And then design a unique experience to get the kids there. I can go into how I came around these numbers later, if you're interested, but anywhere from 80 to 93% of our staff do not consistently apply that methodology to their instruction. And so that's an area that we really, we really need to improve upon. It's as if, and I don't mean to indicate that the investment instructional strategies is for naught. It's as if we've purchased the teachers' bikes, right? So we've purchased them a 10-speed bike, a mountain bike, a dirt bike, but we haven't yet taught them how to ride. So next year, the focus really has to be on intentional instruction. How do you purposefully craft those unique educational experiences? So then when teachers need a bike, they can go to the garage and they can grab the one that they need to really propel student learning. Next, we really need to work on our curriculum here at the high school. We can teach, you know, we could teach teachers how to ride, but if we don't give them a roadmap, we're not going to get students to the destination in which they need to do. The state conducted an audit of our curricula last year. At best, it was found to be inadequate, and at worst, it was nonexistent. So what we really need to do, because the Commissioners Network money is not going to go forever, is that we really need to invest in building leadership capacity to sustain the development and implementation of curriculum over years. We're a high school, we have hundreds of courses we need to do this for. This is a multi-year project. So it's kind of like the mantra, you know, teach us to fish, and we'll eat for a lifetime. But it's important that we have the capacity to develop curricula that is culturally relevant, that is rigorous, and that is driven by our portrait of the graduate attributes. And so that's, that's an intense focus of work for next year. And then finally, as been indicated across the board, we really need to continue to work on our chronic absenteeism rates. We were making decent progress this year, five to 10 percentage points. But my personal belief is that was the low-hanging fruit, and we need to do much more intentional work around that. Chronic absenteeism is symptomatic of other reasons, so it's not a one-size-fits-all. We need a multi-pronged approach to improve student attendance. And I can speak to more of that as well, if you wish. So at this point, I'm going to stop and get some oxygen and turn it over to you if you have any questions of me or the superintendent. Please tell my audio was working and I don't have to repeat all that?
You're good.
I need an oxygen bottle.
I know when we, am I unmuted?
You're good. You're good, Erin.
I know when we visited the school back in January, we discussed briefly the buy-in from the staff. Can you talk about that a little bit, as far as, I know you did on the climate and culture team, but at the same time, you also talked about the staff with that team. Has that, well, we haven't really had that much time since January, but has that changed or is that any different now? Are you concerned there?
Yes and no. I think we've got the structures in place. So the class, so the staff really feels supported. We're able to scale out data team and PLC structures to every department this year and most high levels, so they have the support to do the work. So, no, I don't. I will tell you, however, that it's a difficult road that I have to tread next year because potentially I have to thread a very difficult needle. I have to somehow tell, we have about 140 instructional classroom teachers in the building, and you know, if 80% of them are not really consistently doing something, I have to navigate that message of, you know, maintaining that sense of conviction about the chain, while at the same time not go in and say, hey, 120 of you can't teach, right? So that would be really demoralizing to training. So it's about building the staff awareness of the need to improve, and then showing them that they're going to have my support, and the support of the district in making sure they have the tools necessary to arrive at that destination. I believe that I can navigate that.
Okay, I know you talked a lot about, we were there, about empowering teachers. That's something you plan to do when, because I think that will help.
Absolutely, and that's critical, especially when it comes to curricula design, right? So the last thing we can afford to do is provide them, hey, here's what you're going to teach. Very much so, the collaborative structure that I described with this team is the same thing that happens in the data teams. And I believe you saw that in your visit, right? That was an open, honest dialogue, and that was unscripted. I had no idea what we were going to see, but that is representative of the type of work that's going on here. And that, as the superintendent mentioned, those are indications of the structures that are in place to help support this work.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Damon, can you hear me?
Ah, yes, I can.
Damon, can you hear me? Okay, this is, this is Don Harris calling in. You know, I didn't have the pleasure of visiting your school. In fact, I have been at your school, but not under your leadership. But as a former high school principal myself, I am pleased with your passion. And I understand the very tough job you had coming in. This is just your second year, and the second year that was interrupted with this COVID-19 pandemic. So not a lot I can add. I understand what you're going through, and you've got a, I'm not even sure how you're going to be able to count this year, but I am pleased with the passion, and hopefully we can continue to support you and all your efforts to turn around this school, because I know how difficult the job that is.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, I certainly do appreciate that. I would also say that this year is a total loss, that we had one full semester. We've gathered data from that, we know what our performance was like from that, and that alone will provide us enough real information to continue to chart a path forward.
Give us an idea. Okay, good, thank you.
Dr. Lopez, did you have any questions?
I muted myself. Okay, this is Dave. Thank you so much, Principal Pierce and Superintendent Sarah. I need to really stress my disappointment with the lack of progress at the high school. And I really have to say that I'm supporting the continuation of the Commissioners Network funding, because the Accountability Office has seen in you the capacity to really make improvements. But I hope that in the year that is left, the use of the fundings, and I hope the fall semester and the next year will be, will not be like this month and May, but it will be better, that you have a laser-focused approach and really, really address the critical things in the high school. Again, I'm very disappointed. I am going to support your recommendation because of the Accountability Office and their belief that, you know, you can make a difference. But I, again, I'm very torn in terms of continuing to give money to a place that has such a terrible absenteeism and, you know, results. Again, I'm just disappointed, that's all I can say. And I hope that you, you're very passionate, like my colleagues said, and we know you care. But again, this type of intervention that needs to happen has to be laser-focused. This is not the time to be red all over. You have to be intentional and very, very on the real things that would make a difference. So thank you again for today, for coming, and I appreciate visiting the high school also with my colleagues.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So if there are any other further questions, we're going to move on to our agenda item. Dr. Lopez, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, so we're just going to take a road through. Nancy is here.
Yeah.
Joanna, you're here. Todd and Andrea, correct?
Yes.
Wonderful.
I'm here, Nancy's here.
Great. Okay, so for the next agenda item, we are bringing forward to you the new commission planning schools for the potential entrance into the Commissioners Network for the 2021 school year. With us here today again, we have Superintendent Sarah, Joanna Robles, Principal of Pulaski Middle School, Todd Gerdy, Principal of Slade, Andrea Caligno, Principal of Smalley School, and Jennifer Webb, Lead Turnaround Consultant, that supported them during the planning year. All three schools submitted an expression of interest on April 5th, 2019. Each school has participated in an initial audit led by Jennifer Webb, resulting in a comprehensive evaluation of each schools in the area of talent, academic, culture, and climate operations, including strengths to leverage and growth areas which serve as the foundation for their turnaround applications, completed by each school's turnaround committee. One of the common areas identified as a need across all three New Britain High Schools is the need for curriculum. You will find that while each school has similar plans around this area, they are also very different in other areas specific to each school's need, as well as what each principal will describe. On January 16th, State Board members, together with myself and Jen Webb, visited Smalley School and toured the elementary and middle school grades. At this time, I would like Superintendent Sarah to share some high-level points around the curriculum work across the district, since that is common to all three schools, and then open it up to each school separately. We'll begin with Pulaski and then move on to Slade and Smalley.
Thank you. Can you hear me, Ms. Lemenzo?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Thank you, and to Ms. Lemenzo's point, you heard it just in our prior conversation with Principal Pierce around the need for a curriculum that is vertically aligned, K through 12. This is not just to the three schools we're speaking of, but something that we see across all of our 15 schools here in New Britain. When the needs analysis were done at Pulaski, Slade, and Smalley, the biggest areas of concern came with, under academics, lack of active student engagement, and the majority of the teaching was centered around the teacher, not the student. And this is consistent with an audit that was conducted by one of our RESs at Advance, as well as some state technical support the year prior. We had reached out to Joanne White and Jen Michalek to ask to just start to come in, and it wasn't an audit, but to take a look at our curriculum, K-12, and give us their thoughts on it. So those, those three data points let us, we know that we have a curriculum that is not vertically aligned and vetted, and is not a student-centered curriculum at all. So our work around curriculum renewal or curriculum development is a K-12 initiative, and we are partnering with the RESs at Advance to help us with the, with the core curriculum, as Damon spoke to, a core curriculum that is culturally responsive, that attends to all New Britain students' needs, including our EL population, our students with special needs as well. In addition to EdAdvance, we are contracting with WestEd to ensure that there is a lens of equity that is vetted prior to even reaching our teachers' desks or their lesson plans to ensure that we are meeting the needs of all students. So this portion of the taco, or the academic piece, is a multi-year project in New Britain. And we understand that not only do we have to create a viable, vertically-aligned K-12 curriculum that responds to the needs of all students, we need to ensure that it's enacted upon, right? We can write a wonderful curriculum, but how do we ensure that our teachers are implementing it with fidelity, and also being provided support while they're implementing? I'm not going to talk too, too much more. I do want to say, though, we did do our homework. We went to visit the Winchester school system. EdAdvance had done some prior work with Winchester. We met with the superintendent there and their curriculum team as well to ensure that when we partnered with EdAdvance, we'd be getting a product that we could be proud of and that would guarantee that our teachers have a roadmap to follow that includes all of our K-12 students. And I'm gonna, I'm thinking, I'm going to turn it over now. That's the academic part, and what I need, I wanted to just also emphasize, we have learned a lot these last years, and we spoke with Damon Pierce prior, and now you'll be hearing from three of our other administrators. Hiring is very important, and New Britain is important everywhere. I'm confident in the leadership of my principals. I'm very proud of the work that they're doing to date. And I feel confident that between the Assistant Superintendent and myself, we have a strong cohort, including the high school, all the way down to our elementary school. And that if these three schools are allowed to enter into the network, this cohort will be meeting regularly to do walkthroughs together, to get a sense of K-12. They will be doing walkthroughs together, as well as ongoing data team meetings bi-weekly or bi-monthly. And as needed, we do meet with them on a weekly basis as well. But I want to emphasize the importance of the accountability loop, the feedback loop that we're providing to our administrators, the strong support we're giving them, and a strong curriculum that all of our teachers can follow. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Board members, before we go on to each of the individual schools, did you have any overall questions for the superintendent? Or would you like to move into the school levels?
I'm ready to move into the school levels.
I'm fine with that as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Go to the school level.
All right, great. So let's go ahead and introduce Joanna Robles, Principal of Pulaski School. Go ahead, Joanna.
Good afternoon, committee members. The first thing I would like to say is thank you for allowing us this afternoon to share our plans here with you. As Lisa had said, my name is Joanna Robles. I am the Principal of Pulaski. I've been the Principal of Pulaski since this past August. Pulaski Middle School is a large facility with about 100 staff members and serving 900 students in grades through eight. Pulaski's enrollment is 67% Hispanic, 18% white, 9% black, 3% Asian, and 3% reported as two or more races. Pulaski currently has 189 students with IEPs, which constitutes probably 21% of our student population. And we have 200 identified EL students, which represents 22% of our student population. I want to start by mentioning some positives since I began in August. I want to start by mentioning some positives since I began in August. Year-to-date disciplinary referrals are down 44%. Out-of-school suspensions are down 24%. The suspensions are down 40% compared to last year. Although our average daily attendance remains the same as the previous year at 93%, our chronic absenteeism rate dropped by 6%. We have put in place targeted attendance interventions for all our students with a laser focus on EL and SPED subgroups as they reveal to have the highest chronic absenteeism rate. Those positive outcomes and this turnaround plan were possible through the collaboration of many stakeholders such as my Pulaski staff, students, parents, community members, and union members. We at Pulaski Middle School established a Commissioners Network Turnaround Committee back in October 2019, consisting of approximately 20 people. The turnaround plan was strategically developed with our school committee needs and sustainability in mind, encircled around our Pulaski school vision. Pulaski's school vision states as follows. Our commitment at Pulaski Middle School is to provide a safe, equitable, and intellectually challenging environment that will empower all students to become culturally competent, innovative thinkers, and inspired learners. This turnaround plan includes investment in the area of talent, academics, culture, and climate, and operations to ensure Pulaski Middle School maximizes student outcome and teacher development. These investments support our transformation into a personalized academic environment. Students and teachers are developed and reinforced through instruction that is challenging, relevant, collaborative, student-directed, and connected to real-life situations. As you heard, the superintendent covered the areas of academics. So in the interest of time, I will speak to talent, climate, climate, and culture, and operations for Pulaski Middle School. In the area of talent, the root causes are identified as a lack of of effective instruction. Therefore, Pulaski Middle School recognizes the impact educator preparation has on student learning and has designed a non-instructional practices. In order to transform these strategies, Pulaski will partner with at Advance to increase professional performance for administration, instructors, teachers, and staff to improve learning in a student-centered environment. Develop teacher capacity to implement the renewed New Britain curriculum with fidelity through the support of instructional coaches who will model lessons, co-teach, co-plan, provide guided instruction, observations, and feedback. The indicators of success will be determined by the data from walkthroughs and instructional rounds that show evidence of student-centered learning and environments. In the area of culture and climate, some of the root causes are a lack of connection and rapport between students and staff and low engagement from community and families. Pulaski Middle School will improve student behavior and attendance, increasing family and community partnership by ensuring a personalized academic environment for teachers, staff, leadership, and community. Our core cultural strategies include designing a school-wide behavioral intervention that is based on a progressive and restrictive approach to enable teachers to motivate and foster and provide them with a support system of trusting adults. Implementation of PBIS, provide professional learning in in-trauma-informed teaching practices and restorative practices for all our staff. Implement student-centered activities and opportunities for family and community engagement. Indicators of success will be determined by a decrease in chronic absenteeism, suspension rate, and behavioral incidents. Increase in parent, family, and community partnership and engagement in school activities. The primary focus of operation is to devise a structure that will sustain and unify the whole plan. Pulaski Middle School will create an appropriate organizational structure that will support and enable improvements to school operations by maximizing instructional time and adapting school to maximize routines and transition. This includes daily STEAM classes, returning back to grade-level teams, daily teacher collaboration time with a built-in additional time for SRBI processes. Uh, these operational changes will be within the budget and made without requiring additional staffing. Throughout the next three years and beyond, I will continue to collaboratively work with all my stakeholders and union members towards improved outcome for all students by setting high expectations. To ensure sustainability of the plan and that it is implemented with fidelity, my committee will meet, observe, and analyze the effectiveness of the plan and continually check progress on those expectations and develop further interventions based on the data. I want to express my gratitude to Pulaski's committee partners, Ms. Nancy, Mrs. Nancy Sarah, Mr. Mike Foran, Ms. Jennifer Webb, and Ms. Lisa Lemenzo for your support. I look forward to a great partnership. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanna. Um, can I just have everyone make sure that they are muted? Because the, um, the volume has been going in and out. So now I'd like to open it up to the board members. Do you have any specific questions for Principal Robles and Pulaski Middle School? Erin, you're muted.
Okay, am I good now? Okay.
Yes.
I do have a few questions. Um, you were talking about the walkthroughs, implementing the walkthroughs and instructional rounds. Who would, who is on that team of walkthroughs?
That would be obviously myself, my administration team, my leadership team. Um, in addition to, uh, we have, um, the downtown administrators as well. They, the, the, the central office administrators, uh, the assistant superintendent would also be part of that. But that's also part of also getting teachers involved during their New Britain University where they meet together, and they will be part of those walkthroughs as well. Obviously, their walkthroughs will look different than the administrative walkthroughs, but there's going to be different walkthrough for different purposes. But we are going to bring all those walkthroughs back to the table with the data to obviously focus as we move forward with our plan.
Okay. Um, and you spoke at the beginning on how your suspensions and referrals are both down. Did you say 40% quite a bit?
Yes.
From pre-year? What was, what was different? I know it's your, you've just been there. This is your first year, correct? What was done differently, do you know, that caused that?
You know, it's been unprecedented time. And so one of those things we were looking at, but looking at from the start to, to back in, in March 13th, which was our, our last day in school. Um, there were, you know, there were structures within the school that, that was changed. The, the, um, the, the schedule was changed. Um, we put structures in place where the, the sixth grade now became a two-man team. It, it developed relationship with the kids. Um, it's all about relationship for me with the kids and, and putting structures in place where it all is interrelated with that social, emotional with the kids. Uh, making sure that we have positive announcements in the morning, changing structures to, to really create some relationship building within the school, and also changing structures within the school to allow teachers to communicate with each other, have that opportunity as well, which I did put in, in this school year. Um, have teachers the, the opportunity to connect with students that they're having either in academic issues, behavioral issues, or some social, emotional that the student may be having, just to have that extra time for teachers to connect with those students in addition to my support staff within the school. So there is a lot that has happened since August to now, uh, but I think really is trying to build that community within the school that has made a difference thus far.
Okay, I have a couple more questions, and then other board members can jump in. Um, you referred to the PBIS. Is that something that currently is in the school already? And this is going to be a renewed, or this is going to be brand new for the school?
It's going to be something brand new. It was there, I, I, when I, when we were putting this plan in place, uh, I, I heard from, from teachers that have been there for years that it was there probably five to six years ago. So it's something that we are bringing back in connection with our restorative practice, um, um, and informed trauma for teachers as well. So like I said, everything, I want everything to be interrelated and not isolated where they think it's just a new initiative within the school. I want everything to be interrelated and going back to the social, emotional learning because without the social, emotional learning, the academics will not occur.
Okay, so the restorative and both the PBIS are something that's going to be train, new training and new people coming in to help with the staff doing this?
Correct. Correct.
And then my last question was about, you were talking about devising a new schedule. Is that something you're looking at doing for next school year? Or is this, you're going to plan it out next school year?
No, we're, we're looking at it right now currently to plan for next school year.
Okay, to put that into place as well?
Yes. Yes.
All right, that's all the questions I had. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, Don or Estella, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Okay. Um, Michelle, if you can unmute Dr. Lopez, that would be helpful.
I'm trying to, I'm sorry. I don't know why it's not letting me do it, but let me keep trying.
Okay. Um, at this point, Jen, do you want to say anything in particular about Pulaski, the planning year, and working with Joanna?
Joanna has been fantastic with really incorporating her entire skill.
I'm sorry. I, I've been muted, so I cannot talk. I guess you cannot see me either, so this is very hard. Um, I want to make sure that, um, that this is more for the superintendent. And I want to be, um, the chi addresses as all these three schools begin in the Commissioners Network. What are some of the lessons learned from the lack of progress at New Britain High School that will be applied to ensure that these schools do make progress? What is different? Again, we're going to make an investment, so I want to make sure that, um, the lessons learned are very clearly stated and are very much present in moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Lopez, for the question. Um, number one, leadership matters. Who is at the building level matters. That's number one. I am confident in my four leaders at these buildings now. The second thing I am very confident in, and I've grown over these last few years, is providing support and structure for my building leaders. And I'll be quite honest, I've been quite honest with them. I am holding them accountable to ensure their plan is implemented at the building level with fidelity, and they are ongoing data checks with honest conversations with the principals if something is not working. Um, I, I do think that, um, we're confident, and like I stated, between Smalley, Pulaski, Slade, and New Britain High, we have formed a very nice alliance or cohort together. Uh, we are also including one of our persons who oversees the grant. So we are having twice a month check-ins just on that. And then weekly walkthroughs with the principals to ensure that we are giving them the support they need with a clear understanding that the plan that they've created is a plan I expect to see enacted in the building.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let, let's move to Slade.
Okay, so Principal Verdi, you are up. Thank you, Principal Robles.
Thank you. All right, good afternoon, all.
Good afternoon.
Oh, sorry. Just, um, so good afternoon again. Through a collaborative effort amongst students, families, and community agencies, and union representation at all levels, a fortified plan has been developed that will promote the Slade Middle School vision of becoming trustworthy mentors to all stakeholders. In doing so, cementing our relationships needed to educate our students. It takes a team effort of staff, students, parents, and the community to shift the mindset to one of high expectations and attainable success for all. Our school consists of approximately 866 students and 100 staff. The ethnic breakdown of 74% Hispanic, 14% Black, and 12% White mirrors our community. The academic breakdown of our population identifies 21% Special Ed, 17% English learner. With average daily attendance at 92% and a chronic absenteeism rate of 27%, there is much work needed to engage our students, families, and community in the importance of daily attendance. Two years ago, we redeveloped our behavior platform to focus on restorative practices. In doing so, we have seen a tremendous decrease in our out-of-school suspension rate. Our academic data in the SPEC and Benchmark IAB assessments indicate declining student achievement. Using data from our needs analysis, our teams and committees decided to move forward with a team-based model. In doing so, we have identified key priorities and strategies for each domain to implement in our school improvement process. In the talent domain, key priorities focus on recruiting and retaining high-quality teachers, concentrating on job embedded coaching to build staff capacity to improve their instructional practices focusing on student-centered, culturally responsive teaching. In doing so, we build a platform of sustainability with opportunities for teacher leadership. Building the capacity of staff to become instructional leaders and mentors creates a cycle of sustainability moving forward. Teachers need to be supported, engaged, and intellectually stimulated in their personal growth. Creating a strong, supportive teacher-mentor program that engages teachers promotes the development of trustworthy relationships. The academic domain prioritizes developing a structured, student-centered environment. With the redesign of our SRBI system, we will focus on developing a student-centered approach that meets the needs of all students. In collaboration with at Advance, we will construct a culturally responsive core curriculum in EL, math, science, and social studies. In doing so, our SRBI structure of protocols, progress monitoring, and data analysis will be developed to support lesson planning and instruction. English learner tutors and instructional coaches will be hired to support access to the curriculum for all students. Our culture and climate priorities focus on the strengthening of interpersonal relationships that directly impact the students to create a school environment of inclusiveness, belonging, and pride for all. The school focus of becoming trustworthy mentors is an inclusive philosophy for all stakeholders. We will diminish our chronic absenteeism by creating a school environment that focuses on the social, emotional development of our students and families. A school climate coach will oversee the design and implementation of a tiered restorative support system that integrates peer mediation and an extended learning model of mentoring and enrichment programming. The climate coach will oversee the addition of behavior support assistance to each content core team with the responsibilities of providing social, emotional support access for all students and their families. The operations domain will focus on restructuring of the student's daily schedule to a seven-period day that increases access to extended math and ELA learning opportunities. In doing so, access to additional math and ELA and social, emotional intervention and support classes will be designed. We will use current staffing resources to support the delivery of extended learning opportunities. STEAM and PLUS classes will become part of the core team content structure. The student core classes will be comprised of math, ELA, science, social studies, and STEAM. Our unified arts programming will focus on daily fine arts, IT and manufacturing development, PE, health, and culinary services. The scheduling structure will provide teachers with blocks of common planned time to focus on content and interdisciplinary data teaming with pupil services support. Providing staff the time to collaborate with peers aligns with our vision of developing trustworthy mentors. In closing, the Slade Middle School staff will emblazon our vision of becoming trustworthy mentors to our students, our families, our community, and to each other. I would just like to thank Jennifer Webb for her continued support through this process, and Lisa Lemenzo for having the foresight to bring us together as an educational community to improve our work with students. Coast Alliance.
Thank you, Todd. Uh, board members, do you have any follow-up questions for Principal Verdi?
You have any questions, Erin or Don?
I do not.
Um, I do not either.
Erin?
No, I'm all set.
No, neither do I. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Then finally, Smiley. Smalley.
I appreciate that for your time.
Thanks, Todd. Andrea, you're up. Principal Feligno. There you are.
How are you? Good afternoon. Can everybody hear me okay? Can you hear me okay?
Yes, you're all set, Andrea.
Thank you. So, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Andrea Feligno, principal at Smalley School. I want to first extend my gratitude for giving us the opportunity to go through this process. It has provided the Smalley team with a solid structure to analyze data, procedures and systems currently in place, allowing us to identify areas that need improvement, which led us to the development of what we believe is a comprehensive improvement plan. I would be remiss if I didn't extend my gratitude to Jen Webb and Lisa Lemenzo for all your guidance and support throughout this process. Smalley Elementary School is a K-5 with an enrollment of 624 students. Our student demographics include 76.5% Hispanic, 9.5% Black, 11.5% White and 1% Asian. We have 18% of our students receiving special education services and 30% of our students receiving EL services. Located in a primarily low-income neighborhood, we have 90% of our students qualifying for free and reduced lunch. Historically, Smalley School has been one of the lowest performing schools in the district. Fall of 2019 launched a fresh start for Smalley School. Besides having a new leadership, we moved back into our newly renovated building, reintegrated six kindergarten classrooms, reestablished school-wide procedures, routines and expectations that would assist in building school community and a positive climate and culture. The idea of rebranding Smalley and becoming a high-performing neighborhood school where instruction meets the academic and social-emotional needs of all students became our vision and created unity among staff, families and community. Using the Commissioners Network instructional audit, needs assessment and data trends, Smalley's turnaround committee identified areas of improvement with root causes to determine key priorities in the four domains, which included increasing academic rigor, maximizing instructional time, strengthening our teacher instructional capacity and reducing chronic absenteeism. The district's renewed core curriculum, which is standard-based, provides a framework that promotes student-centered learning and a culturally responsive classroom to ensure that all students have equal access to quality instruction. The student-centered classroom will provide a structure that enables our school-based SRBI and RTI interventions to become more inclusive of support services within the classroom. This will build capacity of our instruction by providing staff with high-level strategies to increase subgroup performance as part of our core and tiered instruction. Building teacher, academic and instructional muscle is key for Smalley's success and sustainability. We have already seen the impact of high-quality professional development this year with implementation of strategies provided by recon training. Teachers received a continuum of literacy strategies to support all students. The selection of universal assessments has guided literacy instruction in grades K through 5, especially that of phonological awareness. We have seen an upward trend in the progress monitoring of literacy skills and plan to continue our work with recon. Teachers will receive ongoing support with implementation of the new curriculum and instruction through collaborative professional learning, actionable feedback and coaching cycles. Indicators of success will be determined through instructional rounds to measure student engagement and growth in literacy. Over the last year, improvement of school climate by re-establishing ourselves as a neighborhood school and providing multiple opportunities for family engagement contributed to a decrease in chronic absenteeism from 26% to 19%. Attendance continues to be a barrier for academic success. We will improve attendance by utilizing strategies from Attendance Works and our NetStat training. The use of a family-school liaison will assist in strengthening home and school connections and implement a mentoring program. To attain the goal of improving Smalley School is imperative that we restructure the school schedules. The alignment of support staff to grade-level schedules will maximize instructional time and provide additional interventions. The focus on budgetary priorities will be based on school needs on sustainability of reform. We are excited about the possibility of being part of the Commissioners Network. I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Andrea. Board members, do you have any follow-up questions for Andrea?
Erin or Dawn, do you have any questions?
I don't really have any questions. I mean, we saw so much when we visited. I must admit, you know, that we saw the data team when we were there and it was probably one of the best data teams I've ever was able to observe in a very long, many years of education. I think you're on the right path and that was very clear and evident while we toured the school and we got to see so many when we were there.
Thank you, Erin. Dawn, do you have any questions?
No, I haven't had the opportunity to tour, but I have, I know several people who have been in and around the school and have heard nothing but good reports, especially in light of the data team. So, no, I have no questions.
Thank you. I think I speak on behalf of the committee when I say that we are very committed to investing through the Commissioners Network in the improvement of schools. And we are going to recommend that this investment. And we also have high expectations for all the schools. And we look forward in the future to visiting and to also seeing changing results and in performance. And we know that you're all committed to ensuring that that happens. So, again, thank you and we look forward to in the future to continue to work with you to see the benefits of this investment. Thank you, Lisa.
Lisa, I would just add one more thing. This is actually for Superintendent Sarah. I know you had made the reference of leadership matters as number one. I don't think I realized until we went through all these schools, one after another, how many new administrators you indeed have in these leadership roles that you put in place in just over the last year or two, year and a half. So, I commend you on that.
This is a real opportunity for New Britain.
I just wanted to say thank you, Erin. I agree and I'm very, very proud of the leadership that I have now. So, thank you for that.
And just one last thing I think to add. This is a real opportunity for New Britain, being that there are three incoming Commissioners Network schools and then one that's currently on. I look forward to working with New Britain and have already talked to Superintendent Sarah about the opportunity of having four schools in the network from one district. So, we look forward to moving forward with all of these schools and the district. So, these three schools will be brought to the full board on May 7th. So, we will be in touch.
Thank you. It'll be four schools, right? Because it includes the high school.
Correct.
Right, okay.
So, thank you, New Britain.
Thank you, Superintendent Sarah.
Good afternoon.
Have a good one.
Good afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we go to Hartford High School.
Yes.
Superintendent Leslie Torres Rodriguez and Principal Keandra Smith.
Okay, Michelle Vizotto, Superintendent Torres Rodriguez is having trouble hearing. Do you notice anything?
She's not connected to the audio. So, she either has to use her computer or she has to call in using the phone number that was provided in the email.
Okay. Just give me a minute. I'm gonna help her through that. All right, let's give it a try again. Dr. Torres Rodriguez, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Great. Keandra Smith, are you here?
I'm here. Do I need to turn my video back on or?
Yes, please.
Okay.
So, the last agenda item is Hartford High School for the potential Commissioners Network for the 2021 school year. With us here today, we have Superintendent Torres Rodriguez and Keandra Smith, the principal of Hartford Public High School. Hartford High School submitted an expression of interest on June 15, 2018. The school participated in an initial audit led by Mike, resulting in a comprehensive evaluation of each school in the areas of talent, academic, culture, climate and operations. This audit served as the foundation for their first and second planning year, developed by the turnaround committee. The plan was developed by the turnaround committee. Principal Smith began her position this year as principal and has worked with district leadership to make significant improvements. Reassess data systems, reevaluate partnerships, reconstitute staff and with the Hartford High School turnaround committee, develop a turnaround plan, which you will get in the upcoming weeks. On January 24th, Dr. Lopez and I visited Hartford High School and met with district and school leadership as well as a student representative and plans and also do a walkthrough. So, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Torres Rodriguez and then open it up to Principal Smith.
Thank you and good afternoon, everyone. Just want to offer brief context, given that this invitation was received at quite a perfect time because it aligned with our district Medal of Excellence, which is our district's multi-year strategic operating plan. And the DME include, is a three-year reconfiguration and restructuring of schools across the district with first focused on grades K through 5 and then 6 through 8. And then the high school piece of the redesign focused on not only redesigning the high school, but also centering the work on post-secondary success. So, when we think about this work and the application, it coincides with the plan that was created by the turnaround committee, all of which coheres and aligns with the shift to have Hartford Public High School be a comprehensive neighborhood high school with a longer-term vision of becoming, one, a model high school, a flagship high school, not only for the city but across the state as well.
Thank you, Dr. Torres Rodriguez. Keandra, at this time, do you want to open it up and tell us a bit more about the plan and your year at Hartford High?
Absolutely. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Keandra Smith. I'm the proud principal of Hartford Public High School, where we serve as 931 students, 63% of which are Latino, 31% of which are Black or African-American, 3% are white, 3% Asian and 0.1% Native American. We have 30% students who are English language learners and 30, or approximately 30% who are special education students or students with disabilities. I would like to take this moment to thank the Connecticut State Department of Education and this subcommittee for the opportunity to share our plan to transform Hartford Public High School and to change the lives of current and future students. In October 2018, the Commissioners Network conducted an operations and instructional audit. The audit revealed a strong sense of pride and a desire for improvement at the school as well as a standards-aligned curriculum. However, it confirmed significant deficits in multiple areas. In the area of talent, we saw a high teacher rating. However, there was dismal student achievement. In academics, the proficiency levels of students in ELA and mathematics are extremely low. When we look at culture and climate, metric, chronic absenteeism, suspensions, expulsion rates were extremely high and our families weren't engaged. The school, as a comprehensive high school, lacked effective and efficient systems to operate. And so, we reconvened our committee, our school turnaround committee, which is composed of representatives from all areas, all of our stakeholders, from community partners, teachers, students, parents, to develop a school turnaround plan using a school turnaround model that identifies high-level strategies, collaboration with community partners, the development of vital systems that will address the deficits that I just shared with you guys, as well as, you know, the belief that, and I have a strong belief and I'm confident that if this plan is implemented with fidelity, it will build the capacity of our staff. We will be able to develop and implement systems that will ensure sustainability, not only during the period of the Commissioners Network, but beyond our participation in the network. There are six core components of our plan and I'll just take a moment to briefly run through what I believe will help to turn our school around and make us a flagship school for the district as well as Commissioners Network. The first component that I'll focus on is freshman academy. So, the research demonstrates that freshman on track is the number one predictor for high school graduation in four years. And we want to provide our first-time ninth graders with a learning experience that is well-organized with a staff that is dedicated to them to ensure that they are on track for graduation. Across the board, we want to implement a tier-one instructional model that is both rigorous and relevant as well as standards-based, that will ensure that students have opportunities for intervention as well as enrichment supports and that provides an instructional framework for best practice for our teachers. We also want to expand upon our work with our freshman academy and our tier-one universal instructional supports to ensure that students have improved post-secondary opportunities. And we'll do that using our career pathways in grades 10 through 12. In those pathways, students will have opportunities for work-based learning as well as opportunities to earn stackable credentials that will make them more marketable and provide them with viable options to be productive citizens beyond high school. Along with these three components, we want to ensure that we provide a culture and climate and a school environment that is both restorative and responsive. to the needs of our students, families and our staffs. So, one thing that we've noticed in our operational and instructional audit is that a lot of our reactionary measures yielded little to no result. So, we want to be more proactive in our behaviors and our structures so that kids actually want to come to school and that parents and community members feel welcome when they enter our doors. So, one of our ultimate goals with this school turnaround model is to ensure that we are embedding a socially-emotional component that will foster positive interactions and relationships with peers and adults for students and staff. We're revamping our advisory program and component as well. Again, this is all focused around our socially-emotional development and growth, as well as academic growth, to ensure that students are paired with a caring adult in a small group setting to support their growth and development throughout high school. Last but certainly not least, we know that we have a high number of students who have not been successful in the traditional learning environment and they are going to require a personalized pathway to meet their specific needs. If you, when you have an opportunity to take a look at our plan, you'll notice that there are a large number of students who are overage and undercredited, as well as a cohort of students who are what we have identified as ninth-grade repeaters. And so, we want to embed an alternative program into our school day that meets the specific needs of those students. So, in closing, you know, we believe that, I believe, I'm strongly confident in the fact that our continued collaboration between Hartford Public High School and the Connecticut State Department of Education will not only improve outcomes for Hartford Public High School, but it will significantly impact the outcomes for students, families, Zone 3 and the city of Hartford. So, it's my goal, again, to become the flagship school for Hartford Public Schools, as well as schools within the Commissioners' Network. Thank you so much for listening and I hope I didn't go too fast for you guys.
Thank you so much, both Superintendent and Principal. And I'm glad to see both of you are doing well and are healthy. Erin, do you have any questions or Dawn, do you have any questions for?
I just have a couple of questions. It was nice to meet you, Principal Smith. Last thing, good to see you again. You talked about the alternative program. Is that going to be a pathway within the school? One of the pathways in the school or is that a separate program outside of the comprehensive high school?
It will be a program within the school. This is a personalized pathway for those students that meet the criteria specific to being overage and undercredited or who may be very focused, of course, because they are ninth-grade repeat.
Okay. And then my other question, I couldn't quite hear you, is your freshman academy. Have a specific designated staff just for the freshman academy?
Absolutely. Our goal is to make sure that we are creating teams of support for all students, specifically for our ninth grade, first-time ninth graders because they need additional support to ensure that they transition into high school appropriately and that they are on track for high school graduation. So, yes.
Thanks. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you. Dawn, do you have any questions?
Yeah, just quickly from me. Ms. Smith, you know, I don't have too much because in the neighboring town of Bloomfield, I'm very familiar with what you're trying to do and I'm very supportive of everything that you're trying to do. The freshman academy, as it really got started, did you get it off the ground this year? Or is that?
Oh, this year? I'm sorry. It was a little, you were a little broken up there.
Yeah. Okay. Can you hear me now? Somebody needs to hear you. Okay. You get the freshman academy off the ground this year or is this a plan for the future?
So, this year, we were able to implement very specific components of a freshman academy, but full implementation is scheduled to begin this fall.
Okay. Thank you. That's, that was my question. Okay. I'm gonna, I'll be in contact with you.
We look forward to it.
Thank you. I do have a question also. You have a lot of partners in this very ambitious plan and how are you planning? How are you going to be coordinating with all of them to ensure that you are, again, targeted and not so based that not have? Oh, my gosh.
So, if I heard you correctly, I heard you mention that we have quite a few partners that are listening to our plan right now. You want to know how we're going to manage and coordinate the efforts?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So, one thing that we are planning to do is to establish a professional learning plan that will ensure that all of the work that the partners will be engaged in, that we crosswalk them and that we will have regular partnership meetings with the school, various school administration and district administration to ensure that the progress monitoring and assessment of effectiveness is in place. We will also have an annual evaluation of the services that are being delivered by each partner. Again, there'll be school leadership, school-level leadership that is going to manage and monitor all the work of each of our partners and the service delivery model that they are presenting, the scope of work, for the scope of work that is taking place across the duration of the partnership. So, ultimately, again, our goal is to ensure that the work, while it is aligned and related, that work is not necessarily open-ended and that we are meeting regularly to ensure the effectiveness and implementation, as well as the progress monitoring of the work of the partners.
Okay. Thank you. I, I think I can speak on behalf of the committee to say that we look forward to you being successful and coming back to us as we monitor your work with better results and with changes the way you've indicated you want to obtain them in the next years. I want to make sure that I thank Lisa Enzo and Desi Nessme and all this staff there for the work they do and I also want to thank you. Again, I, what we have learned from working with other schools is that it's not how ambitious you are, but how focused and intentional you are in ensuring that you have depth, not coverage, but depth. I think if this one best practice is really, again, not to do 20 things, to do three things well and to ensure that those three things have the impact needed. So, we do look forward to working with you. We're going to recommend the investment in your school through the Commissioners' Network. And again, we wish you success and we will be monitoring you because we want to make sure that there's progress and that we can applaud you when we see that progress. So, thank you so much. And again, stay safe, everyone, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa, anything else?
I just want to thank everyone. We have a high team, Dolores Lock, and Robin Nogrom, who were district leaders in this work as well this year. You have been really receptive to the feedback, very easy to work with. We know that there's a lot of work ahead, but leadership matters and you guys are really showing it's there. It's there that you're committed to it, you're passionate about it and we look forward to continuing to work together.
Thank you so much. And I'll just say my little two cents before I give it to Dr. Torres Rodriguez. I just want to say that this year has been such an experience. I'm grateful for all the supports that, Lisa, that you provided, that the Connecticut State Department has provided. I'm grateful for the NetStat sessions. They all have been very helpful throughout the school year and I'm extremely, I'm excited. I don't know if it's showing or if it's my nerves, but I'm looking forward to putting Hartford Public High School on the map as a member of the Commissioners' Network.
And I believe you'll do it. I believe you'll do it.
This is Dr. Torres Rodriguez, just thanking everyone. Of course, my, the internal team for their work, but also Lisa, you and the rest of your team for just, you know, the ongoing dialogue and partnership and actually thought partnership in this process. It has been quite helpful and it also has helped us, you know, enhance those learnings and thinking, not only for Hartford Public High School in this development of the application, but across other schools as well.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Be safe, hopefully.
A journey meeting now and something else?
Don't move.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, and please stay safe and well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye, everyone.
Bye. See you, Lisa.
Bye.
Bye.